Twenty-third will be called to order at seven ten P.M. At this time, would everyone willing and able, please stand for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Dear Lord, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to be here this evening to join in fellowship and discuss the business of the citizens of Annapolis. We're pleased that you brought us all together, and we ask that you give us patience and wisdom as we discuss the agenda for tonight. In your name we pray, amen. Pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. May I panel lady?
Present.
Alderman both?
Here.
Alderman Payam.
Present.
Alderman Pendell Charles.
Present.
Alderman Finlayson.
Present.
Alderman Littman.
President.
Alderman Piper. Alderman Arnett.
Here.
Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the first item?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Is there any other person I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda?
I move that we amend the agenda.
Alderman Finlayson?
I move that we amend the agenda to include acceptance of the Public Safety Committee report regarding the recommendations from the Caucus of African-American Leaders.
Is there a second?
So.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is petitions, reports, and communications, beginning with reports by committees.
Is there any other person that would like to present a report? Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you. The Public Safety Committee met on May sixteenth, last Monday, and had the privilege of hearing several reports. Chief Simmons and his staff introduced us to the newest class of firefighters, and they are in the process of creating a project. So they'll be back to the committee to present their project. But it was very wonderful to see, and I met them the first time they met as a class, it's thirty-three of them, and what we're doing to train and promote our firefighters from within is quite admirable. So they'll be back sometime later to present their report. There was also the announcement about the active shooter exercise that took place on May eighteenth. That exercise did take place at Saint John's College. It was simulating an active shooter in the library. And our fire department, our police department, the Office of Emergency Preparedness, the state police, as well as Saint John's College security team were all part of the exercise. It went well. They did have a little few glitches that they will work out, but it's very comforting to know that we are preparing ourselves for any eventuality. We also had a report from Chief Priestup. Before that, we had a report from the Housing Authority. We were introduced to Mr. Michael Brown, who is their new security chief, and he kind of outlined for us what his expectations are and what his goals are in his new capacity. Chief Priestup gave us a report, a lengthy report, on a number of initiatives, one being Crime Stoppers. We have a Crime Stoppers program, but it's not well advertised, not well-known, and so we had met and talked about how we could get that out into the community so that it could be more useful in helping our officers find the bad guys. We also got an update on the Eastport Patrol, and the fact that we know that there's been an uptick in crime in the Eastport community, and so the department shared with us, Chief Priestup and Corporal Truitt, their approach on what they're doing differently, which includes cameras, of course, it includes increased surveillance, as well as having a drop box there for helpful hints from the community. And then lastly, we heard from Director Gutwall, who's our Director of Planning and Zoning, to talk to us about how the percentage came about it. You may have read in the paper the fact that we're supposed to have three point two officers per one thousand, and he did some homework and traced it back to what was actual a practice when that was actually implemented. And lastly, this is an announcement. June first through the seventh is CPR and AED Week. Chief Priest, not Chief Priestup, I'm sorry, Chief Stokes, sent us a flyer, some information about that. We'll be celebrating CPR training, and we're working to try to implement a program where we can do massive trainings on CPR, because ideally it would be wonderful to have one person in every family who's trained in CPR. Just think about how much safer our community would be at large. Our next meeting will be on June eighth at five o'clock here in Council Chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to follow up on a couple of other things regarding public safety. I was at the police station earlier with the roll call, giving some motivation to the people that, the men and women that serve us. And wanted to give everybody in the public an update on what we've been doing about crime and everything else. So, as you know, I asked for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which the whole council voted for unanimously, to go forward. So ninety thousand of that's going to overtime, and I think you can see by the arrests we made in the Capitol and their reporting that it's going to good use. Thirty-five thousand dollars for camera, which cover Phase One installation of Eastport on President Street. So an update on that. Our departments worked very quickly through the procurement process. We knew this was a priority. They started installation last Wednesday, and the project is expected to be completed within the first week of June. After the installation that will be completed in Eastport, we're exploring other areas, including Newtown twenty. The assessment will give us a view of what's required going forward in regards to body cameras. Not on the agenda for tonight, but just an update for the public. When we met with the chief, a number of people from the community had supported it, and we're doing a pilot program. It's basically free for the city of Annapolis. Each of the vendors come in, want us to buy their products, so they're going to let us use it out for a couple months at a time. The way we're reviewing it is there's going to be three committees. One, vendor identification and communication. Two, the policy development. How do we handle this internally? How do we go about editing? What information do we put online? And then three, the training. So by June first, the rollout plan should be in place of when the pilot will hit the ground, and the Annapolis Police Department's using four to six vendors throughout the year to see which cameras program works better and which one's a good fit for the city. Back to Alderman Payam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Economic Matters Committee met both on May the tenth and May the sixteenth. On May the sixteenth, we met jointly with the Rules Committee. We did review a number of pieces of legislation and took what we thought was appropriate action. And I would say, on May the tenth and May the sixteenth, I would say the same thing. When any of these come up for review, I'll be happy to share with the council that the committee's action, if any, was on them. We meet again on June the eighth here in Council Chambers, six thirty P.M. Our meetings are open to the public, and I would invite anyone to come in, and anyone who's interested in the matters we are discussing to come in and have their say. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Budge?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the Transportation Committee did not have a meeting this month. There was no legislation before us. We will be meeting next on June twenty-first, and we'll be discussing the key performance indicators for our parking management firm. That is the longest day of the year, and we hope they're not connected.
Thank you. Alderman Littman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Environmental Matters Committee met on May twenty-third, I'm sorry, May nineteenth, and we discussed pieces of legislation, ordinance ten sixteen, the Water Service Billings, ordinance twenty sixteen, which is the COLTAR ordinance, and R one sixteen, which is Comprehensive Maritime Review. The committee had amendments to all three, but I'll save them for when we get to those pieces of legislation. We had a few discussion points. Forest Conservation Act, there was a, the Crystal Spring property, developers filed a forest stand delineation, which was mostly gone back to add the stormwater management plan. DNEP provided response to that plan, which is essentially their way of saying they did not approve the FSD. They provided comments and provided, I guess, guidance or questions that still need to be addressed by the developers of the Crystal Spring property. As a reminder for those who are curious about it, because I get questions about Crystal Spring, the process is, as it stands today, after a forest stand delineation is approved, the next step is submission of a forest conservation plan and a site plan. So that's where that project is. We also heard from Director Nash, Dr. Nash, spoke about the Rocky Gorge project and tried to answer some questions, clarifying what the State Highway Administration did with that project. It's a little dense and not so clear, I think, both to that office and to the committee. Specifically, it seemed like S.H.A. approved access for Rocky Gorge onto Aristi Allen, but they have some conditions about where, how much space has to be allowed for the acceleration lane. So we continue to have some questions and follow-up required of Dr. Nash and the Planning Department. We also heard from the AEC, and we also heard from Director Drell on the Title Flood Mitigation Project. Everyone is aware of the fact that we just did some bulk hitting that was completely separate from title flood mitigation, and I've gotten questions about why. The why quickly there is that there was grant money that was going to expire, but on title flood mitigation, there is some additional grant money that is only enough to help prepare some study and design. There'll be additional funding needed for actual title flood mitigation itself. We also discussed very briefly the notion of establishing a no discharge zone as well, which I'll bring up again when it's time to talk about the budget. The next meeting is at an unusual date, June ninth, it's a week earlier than normal, at one thirty. And I'd also like to take a moment to thank Cindy Gaines. These reports that we're getting are just getting better and better. So thank you, Cindy. These are very helpful, and I appreciate you putting the time into them. The minutes as well, I think, also reflect more understanding, and the minutes are getting better and better too. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is comments by the general public.
During comments by the general public, you can speak for anything that's not already scheduled for a public hearing. So if you came here this evening to talk about the annual operating budget, the capital budget, position classification plan, the fee schedule, the fine schedule, the elections or grading permits for tree removal, those public hearings will be immediately following this one. The first three people signed up to speak are Paul Jacobs and Jackie Wells. If you could state your name and address for the record, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. My name's Paul Jacobs. I'm a resident of Annapolis, and I represent the Annapolis Boat Shows. I'm here to give the semi-annual State of the Boat Shows address, I guess, and present a check. We had a, we had a nice boat show spring season this year, both that we did. The Annapolis Spring Sail Boat Show grew nicely. We had about a twenty percent increase in paid attendance this year, which then will then become an increase in the amount that we pay the city as well. A couple of other things that we had, we had a hundred and ninety people that we brought in into what we call our First Sail Workshop. That is actually introducing new people into the, into the activity of sailing. So our hundred and ninety people, a hundred and twenty-eight people came from around the country to do our Cruises University, which continues to flourish, so that's, that's all good news. What I have is, I think you know the formula. We're now at thirty-five percent of ticket revenue that we share with the city, and each year goes to next forty percent, then forty-five, until we're splitting ticket, net ticket revenue with the city after that. This year, we have a check for twenty thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars for the spring show. That represents about a thirty-one point one percent increase in our payment over last year. Now, if you look at the past eight months in total, including revenue sharing with the ticket sales, state admissions taxes, city reimbursements, we've, we've contributed about five hundred and eighty thousand dollars to the city of Annapolis. And part of that, I hope you know about this, part of that is a thirty thousand dollar contribution to the city to pay for the parking kiosks down along Dock Street and in the Donner Lot. So that came to a total of five hundred and eighty thousand. Obviously, this is a big deal. It's the, it's the driving force around the maritime industry here in Annapolis. It also is, represents about a hundred and twelve million dollar economic impact in two weeks in October each year. So those numbers are very important to everyone involved. Unfortunately, there are some problems that we have as well that we need to talk about, and I think that some of those things are being addressed at this point, and I'd like to encourage that to continue. We're getting a lot of additional cost because of the flooding, obviously, some additional time that's required to build the shows because of flooding, and some of the disrepair that the city parking lots have reached. So for instance, last year, we spent five thousand dollars to deck over the top of the entire Newman parking lot between Fleet and Fawcett, and another three thousand, because it was, it'd gotten so rough that we were getting a lot of trip and fall situations, so we had to bring in a decking material and deck over the top of that. We had to raise the bottom of Newman Alley, so where it's flooding there, we had to raise above the flooding. And now this year, we're gonna, it's gonna cost us about twenty-one thousand dollars to deck over the entire parking lot that's near the, next to Dock Street off of the Harbor Master. Our equipment can no longer handle it, so we had to go out and find others that could, that could accommodate the depth of the water there. So obviously, these are things that are happening right now. These are things that we need to get taken care of. We've had thirteen thousand dollars of the forklift repairs because the electrical systems were fried and some of the flooding. We had, and you know, this extra half a day last year to build the show is, is not something that we take lightly, because we only have three days to build the show. So I'd like to see what we can do about getting at these things right away. I know that there are budgetary line items in the budget to take care of, and I know that some money has been granted from the state of Maryland to take care of it, and I know that we have almost six hundred thousand dollars that we contribute to the city each year. So with all those, keeping all those in mind, I would like to see that some of those things are tackled right away, particularly the parking lots that are repairable at this point in time. I know it's going to take a while to raise the world to accommodate the flooding around Compton High Street, but at least we can get started now. The other thing that I would like to encourage, we have an opportunity in Annapolis to become sort of the focal point for sea level rise and shoreline subsidence, and that's with the, the proposal that the International Sea Level Institute is considering locating here in Annapolis, and I really would like to encourage you to do everything you possibly can to encourage that. They, we can, we can make Annapolis become sort of the poster child for how we fix the problem, at least in taking care of what we can take care of, and I think it would bring a lot of financial benefit, state money, federal money, private funds to attack some of these projects. And also, it's probably grow a whole new industry, a whole new ecotourism industry, people coming from around the world to find out what our community has done to solve that problem, and then they can kind of pattern after, after what we do. We can be the leaders there. So I really would like to encourage you to, to do everything you possibly can to encourage them to locate here. And in all these projects, by the way, please consider the boat shows a partner in this, because we, we hope that we have, we hope that we've presented ourselves as people willing to participate and dig in and do what we can too. So that's the State of the Boat Shows, and I will present the check tonight.
To Melissa. Thank you very much. Alderman Littman?
Mr. Jacobs, thank you for coming today, and thank you for the check. I think the city and the council and the mayor certainly do consider you a partner, so I appreciate your comments today. I do want to make sure, I assume that you're in touch with Lisa Craig about some of those sea level rise issues, and if you're not, I want to make sure you were. Thank you.
Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, Mr. Jacobs. Do you have a total for what it costs the boat show to be able to accommodate our flooding problem? I mean, if we're going to be a partner with you, it sounds like we need to know exactly what it's costing you. And you don't have to tell me now, but if you could send it to us, I think that would be great.
I can do that, but you know, this is not a new problem.
I know.
We've been dealing with this for quite some time. The change is that it becomes worse and worse and more, more, you know the statistics. So I think that what we're doing now is we're looking forward, this year is just the beginning. We've got twenty-one thousand dollars that we're gonna put in, brand-new money, gonna put into that one parking lot next to Dock Street. Now, in the meantime, we can't deck over the area outside of, right in front of our main gate for people to walk above the water, because we have to keep that open for a fire lane. So we're trying to think of ways that we can maybe reroute the fire lane or do something and completely deck over the top of that. So the, the cost is not, I don't have, I'm not even at the point where I could come up with the cost at this point in time. Over the years, we know that we've been able to accommodate with our own, our own equipment, and that's no longer possible. So now it's going to cost some real money.
So are you meeting with our fire chief and our Director of Public Works?
Not at this point. We've had some discussion about, about how we can reconfigure the show to accommodate both people and safety equipment. We've got the new stand pipe systems that's operational soon, and so I'm hoping that those will all fit together.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm Jacqueline Wells. I live at two oh three Bloomsbury Square, Annapolis, Maryland, two one four oh one. I'm the president of Bloomsbury Square, the president of the Resident Advisory Board of the Annapolis Housing Authority of the City of Annapolis. Bloomsbury Square is owned by the Annapolis Housing Authority of the City of Annapolis, located at twelve seventeen Madison Street, Annapolis, Maryland, two one four oh three. Bloomsbury Square is located in Ward one. Bloomsbury Square is the only public housing property that requires the residents to pay for parking. The cost of a parking permit in two thousand and three was twenty-five dollars for parking, or a parking permit. The cost in two thousand and sixteen is fifty-five dollars per car and seventy-five dollars for a second car. The increase in cost has put a financial burden on the residents of Bloomsbury Square as the cost continues to rise. Legal aid, our Aldermen of Ward one have done all that they have, has been possible to do. The parking issue continues to exist. The city attorney produced a law months before, months back, that states that it is unconstitutional to discriminate due to economic or person's ability to pay. If this is certain, we find, I find, and we find that, that law hard to comprehend. There must be a solution such as a grant from the city to help with our parking issues. The residents of Bloomsbury Square is asking the cities for the city's assistance and would like to know if there is a way to achieve the same ends that would be constitutional. We are not begging, we are not demanding. We're simply asking for the city's help respectfully. The resident, the residents of Bloomsbury Square, Jackie Wells, President. Thank you.
Alderman Budge?
Thank you, Ms. Wells. I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. Mr. City Attorney, would a, you have an opinion on legality and advisability of a grant under these circumstances?
Yes, Alderman, thank you. I would, and in fact, I believe, early on when we discussed this, I said that the most straightforward way to handle this was to specify putting a grant in the budget, and then because the council had made a provision for a grant rather than a differentiation of people based on a suspect class, effectively, if that was voted up by the council, I think that would be legally appropriate.
Thank you. I think my colleagues can look forward to hearing from me further on this subject.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wells was the last person signed up to speak. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward. Now's your opportunity.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. First, my little girl told me that I didn't apologize for yelling at them people, and I told her I would. And I will apologize for yelling and screaming, but I'm not apologizing for what I said, because that's what I meant. With that said, I'd like to... Second, I'm aware of a letter going around asking that I be removed from the Transportation Advisory Board. Well, when Mr. Giannetti was there, I explained to Mr. Giannetti that I had some few problems I was gonna miss a few meetings, and he, he gave me that okay. After I was here and y'all voted to reinstate me, I called Mr. Giannetti to find out when were the meetings going on. At that time, I had found out he had resigned. I received no emails, no letters, or no phone calls informing me of when the next meeting would be. I came on a couple times when the meeting used to be, but it's, it was changed, and I still don't know exactly when. But I do not wish to be removed from the Transportation Advisory Board. This council itself know how active I am and have been effective in working with the taxi cab drivers and everything else I'm bringing forth to the city council. So whether somebody thinks I'm inactive or whatever, my proof is right here among y'all that I am active and, and when it's called for, when I will be there. So I'm requesting that nobody votes that I get taken off the Transportation Advisory Board. Thank you. Second, I mean, thirdly, it's directly at you, Mr. Mayor. A letter that you put out over at Glenwood High Rise, within that letter, you stated that people were being threatened, if they came forward and talked about who they live and what was going on in their properties. I don't know if you meant, at that letter, you meant just Glenwood or overall, but I do a lot of volunteering work in Glenwood, and the people talk to me. And I'm quite sure if somebody over Glenwood was being threatened by a housing authority or any outside entities, that it would be brought to my attention. You being the leader of this city, if somebody came to you and told you that they were threatened and being threatened, if it was by a housing authority employee, I would think that you were seated at and take care of that and have that employee removed for threatening senior citizens. Secondly, that's a crime. You run the city police department. I would think that you would get with Mr. Priestup or whoever and get that problem solved if it's going on. Also, in your letter, you stated that you were not going to stand by as past administrations did and allow insufficient housing for people to be living in insufficient housing, unsubsidized housing. Now, we know that HUD is cutting the money short. In your letter, you stated that no one would lose their apartments or their homes. At the same time, if, my question would be, if you ran across these conditions that people told you they were living in, first of all, I would think as soon as you started inspections, that would be where you would have sent your inspectors, since you had people telling you that they were living in substandard living conditions. My last question on that page, if you're not going to put anybody out, and if you find these conditions to be true, which means you would have removed a person from a home if it's insufficient to be living in, HUD's cutting the money, HUD's not giving any money, is that an indication that the city's gonna put forth money to make sure these people don't lose their houses and, and help build them?
Let me address each of those questions one by one. So to start with the beginning, I did send a letter to all the residents of the Housing Authority, and we did them before we inspected each unit. Part of that was, besides open doors, I want people to hear from you directly. So I had people on my staff go door to door and drop off letters, letting them know that the city would be inspecting their units, just like we do every other unit in the city of Annapolis. In terms of the threat, a lot of people come to me privately and say, we've been intimidated, we're scared to come forward. Not just to me, that was reported in the Capitol article. You would see people who had things broken for months at a time without going. So I walked around in Bloomsbury Square and did the initial inspections with them, and I have to say, to my surprise, they weren't as bad as I thought they would be. Most of the... to my surprise, they weren't as bad as I thought they would be. Most of the conditions that we found that were violations were minor ones. People painted over outlets, things like that. There were some bigger ones. But in terms of looking into it, that's why I sent the letter. People had come to me privately and said they felt threatened and intimidated, and I wanted them to know that that's not an issue. I think with the new leadership and board member and executive directors, new public safety, we've taken a new leaf so people feel a little bit better. In terms of throwing people out, as I said in the letter, it's not my intention to throw anyone out. Part of the reason we did the inspections in phases, one, there's a lot of units to inspect, and these people have, I think, 8,000 other units to go through on a regular basis. And two, it gives the Housing Authority time to fix it up. So, when we sent the letter back in January, we said, "We're gonna come in in 120 days and inspect all your units." Inspecting them in phases, saying, "We're gonna do Bloomsbury first." So, if you had to move somebody temporarily, you now have time to find him somewhere else while you're fixing up that unit. So, it is not my intention. The city hasn't thrown anybody out. To the last point about the City of Annapolis putting in money, we don't have it, just to be blunt with that, number one. And number two, it's not a responsibility of city government to pay for. When you look at the federal government and the trillions of dollars they spend, and the billions and hundreds of millions of dollars in HUD, they have the money. It's just a matter of being aggressive and finding it. We do it with ourselves, with our two lobbyists. I had a meeting with them the day, as I do every Monday, and we were talking about ways we can get more money from the state. And I think we've been successful. We had a million dollars for flood mitigation. We have made your legislation pass. And I actually offered Mr. Corbett help. I said, "If you need help lobbying, we have two lobbyists, and I'm more than happy to lend them to you to help the city." But in terms of direct funding, the city just doesn't have money to subsidize the Housing Authority.
But that, and that's the point I'm making, because several of the senior citizens over at the Glenwood High Rise, they called me because they interpreted that letter as that the city's going to help pay for whatever needs, uh, to, uh, keep their housing going. And I was trying to explain to them that, I don't think that's true. But the letter gives them the impression that you got their back all the way. Other words, I'm saying, uh, I think if you go down and do an inspection in Newtown 20, those units, you're gonna find some trouble. And, but people are getting the impression that, well, I'm not worried now because the city's there. So, all I'm saying to you is, the letter needs to be just a little more clearer, especially when you're dealing with senior citizens. You know?
I appreciate you bringing that to my attention.
You, you had them really, you know? And then I, I think a calm situation, but I had to come here and question you so that I know exactly what I'm saying and when I'm saying it to residents. Thank you.
I appreciate you letting me know that. Take a look at the letter. Anyone else? Order woman Pendo Charles?
Mr. Eads, uh, to address your point about the, um, Transportation Board, uh, you weren't the only person. There were two other people. I wasn't aware of your situation, but I was aware of the gentleman who's representing Board Three of his situation. And I did send an email on yesterday concerning that because I was troubled by what I had read. Uh, so, like I said, I didn't know your personal situation, but I think it forced, uh, certain folks to look deeper into what was going on. So, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Deborah Wood. I live at 1332 Swan Drive, Annapolis, Maryland, in Cape St. Clair. I spend most of my time at the Chesapeake Children's Museum here in Annapolis. So, I'm here to talk about, about funding for nonprofits, specifically our organization, and how we serve the city. We're very grateful for the building. We get free rent from, because it's a city-owned building, the old WYRE radio station in the Spa Creek Conservancy Park, which is a lovely park, lots of wildlife. And since we've moved in there, we saw the need immediately to serve the low-income families that live nearby, especially unaccompanied children that can stop in. Bates Middle School is right across the creek. The kids come in on the way home, use the bathroom, get a drink, use the phone, or just be in a place that welcomes children. Over the years, our amount has changed a lot. We had a, a high of $10,000 a year. And with that, any group that serves low-income families in the, in the city can have us come for their event, whether it's a church, community event, Boys and Girls Club, Head Start, where those groups can come to us. Same with the public schools that serve a lot of kids who live in poverty in the City of Annapolis. At the end of the year, we usually had a couple thousand dollars left for our Kids in Caboodle, which is the totally free fair for all the children of Annapolis, with free lunch, free pony rides, live entertainment, arts and crafts, games, prizes, book giveaway, a wonderful annual event. It's really hard to do on a tight budget, but we do it anyway. So, from $10,000, we've gone down to $500 a year for the last two years. And when I do my reports, that's about spent by the middle of September. So, we appreciate what you've done. We know that, um, money has been tight. Um, but just keep us in mind when you're making budget decisions about the nonprofits that get the grant money in the city.
Alderman Littman?
Ms. Woods, can I ask you a point of clarification? When the city money was $10,000, weren't you paying, or wasn't the museum paying rent at that time?
No, we've never paid rent.
Never paid rent, even from the beginning?
But, but I'll tell you, um, one year, we got $35,000 in capital funding, helped fix up the building, which needs a lot of work. We've recently sufficiently patched the roof, but it really needs a new roof. And you can't do that on nothing.
Thanks for the clarification.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Kirby?
Ms. Woods. And, and I just wanna thank you for coming and, and sounding to my colleagues the necessity to fund the children's museum. I'm very familiar with the museum. I'm very familiar with the program. And I do remember the bus, uh, that was a little zoo of sorts that you went around to all the city playgrounds, and the children didn't have to come to you. I distinctly remember those types of things. It was one of a kind. Uh, I know that that kind, those types of things take money. Uh, surmised that that program went away because of dollars.
Yeah, that was originally funded by the Housing Authority. It was $50,000 to buy the bus, retrofit it, and pay for staff for one year. And then year by year, they cut the budget, and then offered for us to buy the bus, which I did at a steal of, of $100. And we tried to keep it going with, um, charging for other groups to use the bus, but there just wasn't enough youth to help it continue to serve the low-income kids.
Well, this is certainly a pivotal time to be here in front of council with that pitch. And I thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Order woman Finlayson?
Yes, Ms. Woods, thank you for what you do. I don't like your creepy crawler bus, but everything else is terrific. Um, the building that, um, you are in, city building, had a lot of serious problems. Have you been able to fix all of those problems and...
Oh, yeah. I'll, I'll fix. And we were fortunate that Comcast picked us for Comcast Cares Day, April 30th. We have a whole new floor downstairs. And we also figured out, this is just, um, anybody who's interested in architectural history, we never knew why the, the downstairs was always wet and ruined every flooring we put in. So, my husband decided to rent a jackhammer, 'cause he had a hunch something was going on. We, we tested everything outside, including the gutter and everything, and it still kept getting wet. There was a pipe coming in for what we assumed used to be a water fountain. And it had a one-minute-at-a-time drip under the floor. So, we had a plumbing company come in for a nice discount and, and sealed that up. And so far, so good.
Are we still storing files in the basement of that building?
Yeah, so the, the mitigation left us with half of the storage area. The city has half the storage area. Got storage area for boxes of files.
Okay. Thank you.
We'd like to have more.
I wonder if we know what's in there, actually.
I don't know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Doug Smith, 5 Rebel Street. I'd like to share some good news with you. Just like the Navy is commissioning new officers this week, uh, the STARE Annapolis program, Start the Adventure in Reading, graduated 64 second graders this last week. These were kids from Tyler Heights, Hillsmere Elementary, Annapolis Elementary, Georgetown East, Georgetown Elementary, Mills parole elementary, Nantucket Elementary, and Tyler Heights Elementary. Uh, these are students that were struggling to read Cat in the Hat when they started the program. This last week, all 64 could read Cat in the Hat elegantly. So, I wanted to let you know, uh, this program is working well. We have 140 volunteers who go into these schools twice a week. The teachers give us the students they feel could benefit from this one-on-one tutoring. And the graduation ceremony is probably the most fun because they're all happy. Uh, parents come and they see the graduation ceremony. And we're doing something new this summer at Robinwood. We're going to have a play. And the students will learn their lines. See, they're having a play, but they don't know we're teaching them reading. They're gonna learn their lines. They're gonna perform a play. It'll be in the middle of July, and we'd love to have you all come and see them perform. Thank you.
Thank you. Order woman Pendo Charles?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, this was the first year at Walt F. Mills parole elementary, and I've heard nothing but great things. I'm sorry that I missed the graduation. I was here last week when the graduation went on, but I, I talked to Ms. Downs and I talked to Ms. Snowden, and they were thrilled about what had gone on this year. And we thank you so very, very much. I talked to Linda last week. We met. And, uh, we certainly appreciate all that you do for our students throughout the city. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Alderman Kirby?
Yeah, Mr. Smith, I'd like to say I was Brown Stanton Center also. And, and I actually saw three, uh, three or four hardback books that the STARE program generated, uh, with the children and some themes. And I, I think that, that it would be well to have those books passed around this council. Uh, I, I was not aware of them, but they're future local kids, and they're, they're hardback books. I think it's, that's really neat to see those children depicted, for them to see themselves depicted in that fashion. That just builds character. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing the motion, I declare, comments by the general, our petition reports and communications closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on our agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is appointments, beginning with AP-13-16, the reappointment of Joseph Simo to the Police and Fire Retirement Commission.
Is there a motion to approve the reappointment of Joseph Simo to the Police and Fire Retirement Commission?
Still move.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar include, on first reader, O-24-16, Snow Emergency Roots, O-25-16, City Code Maximum Penalty Provisions, on second reader, O-18-16, Amendment Number One to the Eisenhower Golf Course Lease Agreement, and, um, O-20-16, Title 17 Updates, which Alderman Littman will be requesting be removed from the consent agenda.
So requested. All right. Anybody else? Hearing, no objection. I want to entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Still move.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Uh, yes, sir. Mayor, Mayor Panalini?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Bus?
Aye.
Alderman Panon?
Aye.
Alderman Pendo Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Littman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye. The ayes have it. Is there, Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Business and Miscellaneous, beginning with GT-21-16, Transfer from Contingency Transfer to Police Overtime and Police Equipment APD.
Is there a motion to approve GT-21-16? Is there a second? Any discussion? Alderman Litt, I'm, Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I do want to commend the administration and also the Police Department for the incredibly rapid response on the cameras. It, uh, I reported that to my community, and it was very much appreciated. I know, um, Officer Truitt spent several long days negotiating this, and I believe he got us a very good deal. But more importantly, a vendor who could put the cameras in place very quickly, and it is much appreciated.
Thank you. Alderman Littman?
Thank you, uh, Mayor. Can we have someone from the administration describe how this money will be used?
We can. I said it, uh, mainly at the beginning, $90,000 will be used for police overtime and $35,000 for cameras. If you'd like more specifics, I can have someone from the Police Department give you an update.
I think just some brief comments would be appropriate.
Okay. Captain, if you could join us?
Evening. If you could just, uh, describe generally for the council and anyone watching, what this money's going to be used for?
I'm wondering if I have cameras on, for additional funding. $90,000 of that, the office, their current overtime budget, and $35,000, I'm sorry, $35,000 of that, remaining of that will be for the camera project on, that's underway in the Harbor House community right now. Uh, throughout the, um, this, the first part is throughout the Harbor House community on the front side, and then there'll be another phase for Eastport areas. We have access to, we will have access to the cameras to view them through our CCTV cameras, monitor system and stations in the Police Department.
Is it already, is it, is it, is it, is it, is it monitored, cameras, or is it added more than...
Will be added to it, yes. We will. We will. Eventually, we will with all the cameras, especially if we have the cameras throughout, um, throughout the city. Yes, we will. We're hoping that it, it'll be added to our budget, to the Police Department's budget. Yes. I'm sorry. I don't. I don't know. Uh, I believe, um, from reading, maybe, I, I'm not sure. I, I'm not sure.
I think part of it was a timing issue, which is, I submitted my budget, the Finance Committee submitted theirs. We had the shootings in Eastport, so it came kind of after the fact. But we'll make sure you get that information. Absolutely. Alderman Kirby?
Yeah. Thanks, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and Ms. Howard, I want to thank you and the Chief, uh, Pristup, uh, Alderman Arnett, I'd like to thank you. Uh, all the women, uh, Finlayson, Chair of the Public Safety Committee. Uh, I know that the fire was lit under you, and you put the chief's foot to the fire, and, uh, Ms. Howard put them foot to the fire, and, and the mayor's foot to the fire to get some things done over there. Uh, Alderman Littman, there's a ton of moving pieces concerning the cameras, and we would all like to have them, uh, viewed 24/7 in unison with, uh, the Housing Authority hiring a public, uh, safety director over there. Uh, he's in ongoing meetings with Chief Pristup and his command. And there may be some ways where certain members of the community that has some police, uh, background, uh, in other places, uh, Federal Marshals, for instance, and, uh, Department of Homeland Security. He knows some personnel. So, we may be able to get some quality people to monitor the cameras. Uh, but, uh, he's so new, and the chief is so new, the cameras are just being installed. Uh, I think Square One is to get them up there, but I think , uh, the, the mayor and, uh, Alderman Arnett and myself are keenly aware that we'd like to have them staffed 24/7. So, again, uh, Ms. Howard, Captain Howard, thank you very much.
Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, something new with this development is that there's also going to be a camera feed to the Public Housing Authority. And this is just another example of the new relationship between the city and the Housing Authority. And as Alderman Kirby just said, uh, the new security officer, Mr. Michael Brown, is, um, thinking about recruiting members of the community to help monitor the cameras. They know who lives in the community and who should be there and who shouldn't be there. Uh, and so, again, I just think, um, the city has done a really good job on this one. Came through big time, and the new relationship, I think, is gonna pay dividends.
Order woman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you. Um, Captain Howard, are the cameras gonna be monitored 24/7?
No. We try to have...
No, we try to have them monitored as much as possible with, um, the personnel that we have, and that's the reason why we will need, will need additional.
Okay.
We try to mon, get them monitored as much as we can.
And I understand that these cameras are a first step in a bigger plan to address crime in the community. You know, one of my concerns is, has been, once we saturate one community, they will go elsewhere, and we already see that occurring. Um, are the cameras those that can be moved, or is the company being asked to consider all of our at-risk properties?
The cameras, the additional cameras, these are not the ones that will be moved. Um, I know there's a plan, and there was a request through, um, for, for additional money through, um, stations, for cameras throughout the city. Um, right now, that request has, is being heard by GOCAT, and we're waiting, waiting to hear from GOCAT, and it was, the request is hopefully to be an additional seventy-five thousand dollars for cameras throughout the city.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and normally the cameras are stationary cameras throughout the city.
Does that then mean we'll need additional monitors? Or will the same monitors be able to?
The same.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
If there's no other discussion, all in favor of the transfer, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Captain Howard. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is public hearings continued, beginning with ordinance O-13-16, Annual Operating Budget Fiscal Year 2017.
We have a lot of people signed up to speak, so I would just ask if you keep it within the five minutes. When you hear the tone, if you could please summarize. The first three people signed up to speak, Mary Ann Fuller, Kevin Engler, and Melissa Sherwood.
Thank you. I'm Mary Ann Fulford, representing the Backpack Buddies Program at Heritage Baptist Church. We continue to work with two elementary schools within the city, Georgetown East and Mills Parole. Right now, we have seventy-eight children that we're serving on a weekly basis. This is a weekend food program and a short holiday program of, of food for the children. An interesting statistic, and we don't have an explanation for it, but of those seventy-eight children, fifty of them are boys. Twenty-eight girls and fifty boys. We have eight homeless children. The schools designate the children. We have nothing to do with the choo, choosing the children that the schools feel are most in need of this extra food, and the church provides all of the food. We include in the bags food to cover seven meals. Some of the type foods that we include are cereals, oatmeal, breakfast bars, canned meats, uh, macaroni and cheese, snacks, milk, juice, and fresh fruit. Beginning in the fall, the county food bank got a grant, and we are able to tap into that, so we are now about twice a month able to get fresh fruit from the county food bank at no cost, and so that has helped reduce the expense of our program for this year. We have about twenty-five church volunteers, and some who are, are not actually in the congregation, but are friends or interested in the program. And then, once a month, children at our church do, uh, the packing for the weekly, uh, delivery. We are funded by the church, by funding from the Heritage Learning Center, from donations from that, from friends who feel the need and the interest in the program, and certainly from the grants, such as the community grant from the city. We could really have, um, much more difficult time financing the program without these grants. We also receive, have received books from the big program, and we were able to include those at the end of, well, in December, and we will also be giving away extra books at the end of the school year. In December, we were also able to include, again, for this year, donated knitted hats and scarves and gloves from the knitting group at St. Mary's Church, and, um, about six to eight inch size stuffed animals that were donated by Coles. And in addition to that, we had about six Annapolis police officers who came and not only helped pack, but they helped deliver to the schools in December. So that was an exciting time for us. In January, uh, from January to May, we have had seventy-eight children, as I mentioned before. During that time, from January to May, we will be providing meals for these children, because we provide seven meals for the weekend from Friday through Sunday evenings. We will be providing over ninety-eight hundred meals, and that's just January to May. In one week in November, we added seven children. And those were requests certainly from the schools who asked us, they saw the needs of suddenly seven children who needed that extra weekend food. We would not have been able to do that as quickly as we could without the financial support from grants such as the community grant. We are so grateful for that, and we appreciate, um, what you can do to help us out, because we do feel like we are serving the children of Annapolis and giving them a better start as they are in elementary school and then move on into the other schools. Thank you.
Alderwoman Finlayson has a question for you. I just want to say, thank you so much for the service that you do for the community. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. It's, Georgetown East had a recognition last week, and I was unable to be there for the volunteers. And the volunteers that went said it was just so heartwarming and so loving for the children. Not only, we do not identify, you know, we don't know the individual children, but they knew us because they see us delivering the food. Hugs, thank yous, so we feel that, that we're helping out where we can, so thank you.
Ms. Ford, I do have a question, first of all, thank you. Um, do you, how long does your program want, run in the course of a year? Is it during, while school is in session?
Our program is only during the time that school is in session. Actually, we start about two weeks after school begins, because that gives the schools time to identify the children they feel most in need. Now, as an example, in October, by October, we had sixty-nine children. Um, and then suddenly it went up to seventy-eight. So we are always aware of that and try to be prepared, because we're not gonna start out with the number that we're gonna end up with.
Okay, thank you.
Alderwoman Pindell Charles?
Yes, uh, thank you, Ms. Ford, so very much. Um, I'm on staff at a school, elementary school out in West County, and I'm part of the assembly team to get those bags together, so I know exactly what you're talking about, and it is critical. It's a critical need for many of our students in this county and the city, and we thank you all so much for your yoman efforts.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, and thank you for this opportunity tonight. My name is Kevin Engler, and I'm the Transportation Supervisor and Mobility Manager for the nonprofit Partners in Care Maryland. On behalf of our C, uh, our CEO and founder, Barbara Houston, who could not be here this evening due to another commitment, I've been asked to step in and pinch it for her this evening. But I want to thank you, uh, the council for its past support of our 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We, Partners in Care, provide transportation and other services to help Annapolis area seniors remain independent in their homes. With a grand award we received for the fiscal year, the current fiscal year, you, as council, have helped Partners in Care to provide more than four hundred trips to area hospitals, doctors' offices, dentists, pharmacies, food banks, grocery stores, churches, and other popular destinations for approximately sixty to seventy older adults, all age fifty and above, who live here in the greater Annapolis area, and who rely on our service for their transportation needs. In addition, we continue to have a close, ongoing relationship with the Department of Aging, but we rely heavily on the support that your community grant provides. With much appreciation, again, for your past support, I would ask the council to again consider our grant proposal for fiscal year 2017. Thank you.
Thank you. Next three speakers, Melissa Sherwood, Carol Benson, with Tim Leahy and Diane Warring.
Good evening, Mayor Panel Ladies and City Council. My name is Melissa Sherwood. Um, I live at Four Rockwell Court in Annapolis. I'm a resident here of the city most of my life. I am the Executive Director of Feed a Healthy Mind. Um, at Feed a Healthy Mind, we work hard to stave off the alarming rates of food insecurity, type-two diabetes, heart disease, and childhood obesity, all within our local city children here. We do this through nutrition outreach, cooking classes, community gardens, summer camp programs, and most importantly, um, our feeding programs that run throughout the year. I'd like to give you a quick example. Um, I attend Chesapeake Christian Fellowship Church, and we partnered with Chesapeake Christian Fellowship Church. On, on May fourteenth, the church was able to put together fourteen hundred boxes worth of a week's worth of groceries in each box this year, and hand them out to residents that live in food insecure homes around the city here in Annapolis. So it wasn't fourteen hundred residents, but fourteen hundred families in their houses. Door-to-door, we take them out and deliver them, so it was a wonderful event, overwhelming response. Um, we also do our summer camp programs and our summer, summer feeding programs. And last summer, thanks to, uh, the community grant and all of your support, we were able to send out over a thousand meals during six weeks of the summer camp program. Our campers that come are children between the ages of six and fifteen. Our children actually help pack the meals, they help send them out. Um, we worked with Melvin Colbert over on O'Berry Court last year. That was the community that we designated. This year, we'll be working with all the Housing Authority properties to quadruple what we did last year. But these children of our city get into it so much by actually helping make the meals and pack the salads, and we make all healthy foods. That's, um, something that I think distinguishes it just a little from all the other programs that are going all the feeding. It's my belief, and the belief of our board and all the people that we have, doctors, nutritionists on staff, that, uh, like, putting food out for the children is important. There are so many hungry children in the community, but we want to make sure that the children are eating healthy food as well. So, we are working on community gardens. We just planted a big one down at CCF. All, all the rain has held us up for a couple of weeks. Every time we put something in, it washes out. All the things we planted from seed washed out. Um, but we have beautiful garden boxes, handmade things that people have donated their time to put in, that we hope to be able to bring produce. Last year, we relied on a lot of farmers, um, from farmers markets around here in the city and through the county to give us produce, and we drop it off to O'Berry and different communities. This year, it's our grand hope that we can feed a lot of children and their families all that produce. The last thing I want to say is, um, we've always targeted children through our classes and our outreach programs. This year, we're shifting focus a little bit, and on the grant that I applied for, I put in there, we're starting to target the parents a little more as well, because the parents are in control of what they're purchasing for the children. So that nutrition education and that outreach is so important to give the families a healthy start, to make sure that the children aren't succumbing to all these illnesses that you see each and every day. So it is our goal to feed as many children as we can throughout the year, and to help them be as healthy, and, um, help them to thrive as much as we possibly can. I want to thank you, each and every one of you, because a lot of you already know of our programs. And Mayor Panel Ladies, thank you so much, from the bottom of my heart, for helping us throughout the years, to help the kids, and for your support. Really appreciate it. Thanks.
You're welcome.
My name's Carol Benson. I'm the Executive Director of the Four Rivers Heritage Area. My address is 2306 Whitehall Road, Whitehall, Maryland, 21161. Tonight, I'm joined by two board members, Chair Diane Novak-Waring, and our Vice Chair, Tim Leahy. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd like to talk about the Community Grants Program and the Annual Operating Budget, and the grant to our organization in particular. In past years, crucial funding for Four Rivers has been included in the Finance Committee's recommendations for the budget as a line item grant, and I would like to say thank you for that past support, and share a few words about why this is important. The Four Rivers Heritage Area is one of Maryland's thirteen certified heritage areas in a statewide program that strategically leverages economic development through preservation and heritage tourism throughout the state. The Annapolis City Council was part of the certification process that created our organization from the very beginning. The statewide heritage areas program provides funding to both capital and non-capital projects located within heritage area boundaries, and the city has benefited substantially from this funding. Annapolis is a premier heritage destination, and we work in partnership to ensure that its priceless heritage assets can be preserved and grow stronger each year. Our organization also builds new partnerships, fosters sustainability, and supports programs and projects that preserve our community's cultural identity. The annual collaborative heritage event, known as the Maryland Day Celebration, continues to bring hundreds of visitors to heritage attractions during a three-day weekend in March. The city's support is crucial to our own budget and to the budgets of our sister nonprofit heritage-related organizations, including the Chesapeake Children's Museum, Historic Annapolis, Archaeology in Annapolis, and more. For our organization, the city's funds are part of the dollar-for-dollar match that we're required to raise in order to receive an annual allocation of a hundred thousand dollars from the state through the Maryland Heritage Areas Authority Program. We depend on your support to raise that full amount. Our organization works year-round to bring state funds to local museums, historic houses, heritage organizations, and even to projects by the city of Annapolis itself. Four Rivers is the only entity through which heritage-related nonprofit organizations and municipalities here are eligible for matching Maryland Heritage Areas Authority grants. Since certification in two thousand and one, Four Rivers has brought more than three point nine million dollars in match program and project grants, leveraging over thirteen million dollars of total project support in this heritage area, and we're about to celebrate our fifteenth anniversary. The Heritage Areas Program does its good work by leveraging every dollar and by strategically focusing funding only to designated areas. Our heritage partners depend on this funding for critical upkeep to their brick-and-mortar buildings, and for new or refurbished exhibits and other projects that bring the heritage tourists here each year. Again, I thank you for your past support, and we ask you that you continue this important funding in the coming year, and I'd like to ask my board members to add their thoughts.
I don't, excuse me. I'm Diane Novak-Waring, and I live in, uh, West River, Maryland. I don't live within the city, but I come to the city often for the events, the historic areas, and places that are part of the Four Rivers Heritage Area. And I encourage you to support, um, this wonderful organization, as Carol said, which is gonna be celebrating its fifteenth anniversary this fall. Thank you.
Good evening, um, Tim Leahy, um, 110 Archwood Avenue in the city, and I just would like to personally attest, um, as, as a participant, as a city resident in many of the activities that the Four Rivers Heritage Area sponsor, and also as, um, a witness of the fact that the heritage tourism visitors that the Four Rivers area markets to, through a variety of, of, of different types of marketing channels, is a valuable economic resource to this city, and I urge you to support the, uh, funding as you have in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Warring, if you could just state your address for the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, 5103 Page Lane, West River, Maryland, 20778.
Thank you. The next three people signed up to speak are Mark Leone, Fay Mauro, and Ed Green.
I'm Mark Leone. I teach at the University of Maryland, direct archaeology in Annapolis, but I live in DC. Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for your support. Over the last thirty-five years, that archaeology through the University of Maryland's Department of Anthropology has excavated and exhibited and taught with the materials we've recovered. of Anthropology has excavated, and exhibited, and taught with the materials we've recovered in the city. I'm here to ask for your support to hire a graduate student, one of my own graduate students, to help with the transfer of the entire archaeological collection. Thanks. Thank you. The University of Maryland Library has offered to take in perpetuity and store forever and catalog the archaeological collections made in the city by us over the last 35 years. The collection is from 40 archaeological sites, including many of the most important places in the city. All of the materials are cataloged. There are about 750,000 individual things, but having millions and millions of attributes, all having been recorded in terms of the space they're found in on all of these sites. All of the collections exist in about 1,800 boxes, two-thirds in the city, and a third at the university in our own department. So the request that I've made through the Community Grant Program is to hire, to fund, a graduate student who will help with the transfer of title from the owner of the collection to the University of Maryland Library. The library will only take what it owns, just as the library owns all its books, just as the library owns all its archives. The library will take the collection if it owns the collection. That doesn't mean it will hoard the collection. It will share it the way it shares any archive and any book, probably making it far more available and accessible than it is at the moment. I want to thank City Manager Tom Andrews for having helped us organize the temporary solution for how we're going to handle this, because the library will not take any of the material until 2018. It has built a brand-new library, and it requires an enormous amount of effort to empty one library, making space for this particular collection. The most important thing that a graduate student working with me will do will be not only to help with the transfer of ownership, but to design a digital system whereby the materials will be recorded spatially on the maps that already exist, and that those digital records will be put online so that anybody, anywhere, can find anything using whatever problem anybody in the world wants to bring to the study of Annapolis. So what this is, is a public archive outside the city for one of the city's greatest treasures, having been systematically gathered using a particular system by the state's university over the last 35 years. So, excuse me, this is a very big deal, and a very big commitment to moving a piece of the heritage of the city systematically excavated to the University of Maryland itself, the biggest element of the state university system of Maryland, with graduate students, doctoral students, and undergraduates, all committed to not only helping to preserve, but to use this system in one place, which would mean an ongoing commitment to research about the city using its archaeology. So this is a very big deal, and I appreciate the fact that the City Council has helped support us for the last three and a half decades. So I'm particularly grateful. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Fay Mauro. I'm Executive Director of the Anarone County Volunteer Center, located at 2666 Reva Road, Annapolis 21401. And this is our Board President, Bruce Morgenstern, who spends an awful lot of time at that location as a volunteer, and also is a resident of the city of Annapolis. This evening, I'm here to support the Community Grants Program that truly demonstrates a spirit of partnership and collaboration, so that scarce resources can be targeted to those most in need. Your support for community-based organizations to provide services to those still suffering from the slow economic recovery is both appreciated and necessary. The Volunteer Center provides unique support to our nonprofit partners, and enables those partners to direct more resources to their mission rather than to volunteer recruitment. Many of our community partners are located in the city, such as Centro de Ayuda, the arch of the Central Chesapeake, Seeds for Success, OIC, Chesapeake Children's Museum, Spa Creek Conservancy, Creating Communities, and the Annapolis Recreation and Parks Department. There are even more of our partners that support the city of Annapolis and its residents. In fact, looking at the list from last year's grantees, as well as this year's, the Volunteer Center connects volunteers with most of these organizations to help strengthen their capacity to thrive and grow. We also provide significant support to the public school system, especially Annapolis High School and its feeder schools, identifying volunteers to support the schools, and connecting the students to rewarding volunteer opportunities. Support by the city government enables us to continue support for these important community partners. The city's community grant dollars helps the Volunteer Center to leverage both public and private funding to provide a stream of human capital for nonprofits and local government agencies that need volunteers. We know that you need to look at return on investment, and last year, we connected nearly 4,000 volunteers who performed almost 90,000 hours of volunteer service. That's roughly a $2 million value to the community. When you narrow the focus to just the city of Annapolis, the concentration of nonprofits that we support in the city, and the number of residents supported by those nonprofits, our return on investment is significantly higher. In summary, we want to thank you for the years of past support, and we respectfully request that you approve the amended budget allocation for the city community grants, so that you can provide even more support to area nonprofits, including the Volunteer Center. I appreciate your consideration, and Bruce, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I would, very briefly, I'd just like to thank the mayor and the City Council, because I've seen you out there. You volunteer also, and we appreciate what you do for the community. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ed Green. I live at 2423 Vineyard Lane, Crofton, Maryland 21114, and I'm the Executive Director of OIC. And again, thank the council for the opportunity to speak to you this evening on behalf of the participants, staff, board, directors at OIC. Our mission is to provide low-income people with the tools and support to overcome barriers to economic opportunity and social justice here in Anarone County. Through the present grant and the proposed grant for fiscal year 2017, we will prepare our participants for employment so they may become contributing members of the community through life skill development, fundamental education, job skills training, employment readiness, training and assistance in job search and placement. Through partnerships with other local nonprofits, i.e. the Center of Health, Blessed in Tech, HACCA, and the Anarone County Partnership for Children, Youth, and Families, we are able to offer classes and clinics to our OIC participants. An example would be our job readiness clinics. Topics to be presented include "Your Attitude Determines Your Success," "Resume Building and Interviewing Skills That Work," "Professionalism Is the Key," and I like this one, "I've Got the Job, Now How Do I Keep It?" Just to mention a few of the classes. These soft skills clinics are presented by Blessed in Tech instructors Willie and Dolores Bullock. These two dynamic individuals also present our new intermediate and advanced computer class. The new segment is entitled "Microsoft Essentials." This is and will be a fast-paced, six-week training module on the Microsoft Office Suite. Just a bit of good news here. At the successful completion of our first Microsoft Essentials instructions, one of the participants was able to obtain a new job in a local car dealership because of the training that she had just had. Congratulations goes out to, I can't say her last name yet, but to Jasmine, a participant of both Blessed in Tech and OIC. More good news. Although our GED prep classes aren't finished, and we've not begun post-assessments, some of our participants have been advised to take the GED practice exam, and in a few cases, the GED exam itself. Newsflash, just in today, one of our participants from the GED prep class received his scores today, and he passed the GED. Thank you. Congratulations goes out to Brandon. Can't say his last name yet, don't have permission, but we hope to have more good news for the entire board, council, soon. Our next GED prep class starts in September. We have several applications already, and we are offering tutoring sessions to those applicants in preparation for the upcoming semester. And again, on behalf of our participants, staff, volunteers, tutors, and board of directors, we'd like to thank you in advance for your continuous support. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next three people that are signed up to speak are Lynell Bowen, Robert Clark, and Tanya Clements.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Alderman. My name is Lynell Bowen, 362 Broadview Lane, Annapolis 21401. Mostly, I live at 801 Chase Street, called Maryland Hall. I'd like to compliment you all, because all these groups are worthy of funding. They do good work, and that's why Annapolis is so special. And I think that our mission, Arts for All, is special too. And I would be remiss if I didn't have to look at the murals painted by Annapolis artist, teacher, mentor, Lee Boynton. He took one year out of his life to paint those, and I think they're a lovely legacy for the Annapolis 300. And we'll miss Lee. Maryland Hall is the home of the Symphony, the Ballet Theater of Maryland, the Annapolis Corral, the Annapolis Opera, and the Chesapeake U Symphony Orchestra. Our mission is Art for All. We try to make it affordable, accessible, and available to everybody. And this project, somehow I think I'm in the wrong budget here, because it's a capital project, but I'm not quitting now, okay? Improved access for the arts. We have 4,500 students. We have 100,000 people that attend our events. We have 300 local and regional artists that show their work, all ages from 2 to my age, over 80, of course. But we're planning on removing all the seven exterior doors and replacing them with lighter wooden doors with light in them, like our front door, as it was original 1932. We have Maryland Historic Trust easements, so we're very careful with all our improvements. We're going to try to put in two new access ramps in the back in the parking lots. It's becoming increasingly important to have access for not only the elderly, but the handicapped, infirm. It is really necessary. We've applied for the grant from the Maryland Heritage Authority, and the Four Rivers is very helpful in this, and so this money would be used to match that. It's very important to match grants. We have after-school programs. We care in friends, Hispanic students. We have scholarships. We do all that we can to make arts accessible, free tickets to events when we can, and all of this in conjunction, especially with Wiley Bates, performing a visual arts magnet, for which I'm very proud of, a failing school that is now stellar. If you haven't been, you should. Anyway, I invite you Thursday night, and it's not going to rain, because it's going to be outside, to the Old Mill High School Steel Drum Band. If you don't come to Maryland Hall, you'll hear it down here, I'm sure, but it really, it's free, it's fun, and they're really good. Let's hope it doesn't rain. Anyway, I want to thank you for all your past support. Maryland Hall wouldn't be what it is today without all of you. Thank you.
Auto woman, please.
Ms. Bowen, thank you. And what time is the steel drum band?
5:30.
5:30. You didn't give us the time.
It's not going to rain.
It's not going to rain, of course not. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Robert Clark. I'm the President and CEO of Historic Annapolis. I live at 9 South Street in Annapolis. I wanted to thank you for giving Historic Annapolis this opportunity to speak on behalf of our fiscal '17 community grant application. We requested a $15,000 grant to complete the third and final phase of our digitation project. Specifically, the funds would go towards creating a user-friendly archival web portal for the public to access Historic Annapolis's collection of archives and cultural objects. The information that will be made available via the web portal is an extensive and unmatched collection for properties located within the city of Annapolis and objects related to our history. The web portal will make these records available online to researchers, historians, property and business owners, and the preservation professionals, such as the HPC and the Maryland Historic Trust, who rely on this information to make key decisions about alteration requests of properties in the historic district. The digitation project has been a multiple-phase, multiple-year endeavor that has a total cost of about $45,000. The city was generous in supporting Phase 1 of the project last year with a $16,500 grant that included digitizing approximately 15,000 photograph slides and architectural drawings. The Arts Council of Anarone County also provided us with a $9,000 grant to purchase new collection software and convert existing data. We're in the last phase of the project, which is to make all of this information available via the web portal. With your support, we can complete the project and make this much-needed resource available for public use. Thank you for your consideration.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Thank you. My name is Tanya Clements. I'm the Assistant Director for Community Initiatives and Programs for the Anarone County Department of Social Services, and I am happy to be here this evening to talk to you regarding our community grant for a street homeless outreach team. A street homeless outreach team will impact the homeless situation in downtown Annapolis specifically, and with little supports in place, currently, the homeless in Annapolis City are unable to gain the resources needed to be eligible for housing opportunities. Homeless individuals have been staying in the street for over eight years. These individuals could have been housed with proper, if we had had the proper supports in place. A street outreach team will offer these supports with our partnerships with the local community resources. The street outreach team will help individuals that are homeless access mainstream benefits, mental health services, and substance use treatment. The outreach team will also be the first call in dealing with homeless issues in the city of Annapolis. The team will have a rapport with the homeless. They'll work with the community, business owners, and the police to help address the needs of the community and reduce police involvement in addressing the issues the homeless population face and create. The end goal will be to reduce and eliminate homelessness in the city of Annapolis. For example, one individual, he's been homeless in Annapolis for the past nine years. He suffers from mental health issues that are untreated. He has substance use issues, mostly alcohol, and has a large police record due to public drinking and intoxication. Mental health case managers have not been successful with working with him because of his inability to keep appointments, which is a requirement to receive such services. Although he is interested in the mental health services, he is not oriented with time. He continues to drink in public, sleep on our park benches, and beg for food and money. I should say, I am a resident, sorry, 100 Stone Point Drive, Annapolis, Maryland 21401. An outreach team does not require individuals to keep appointments. They search out the individuals and find them. They meet with them on the street, no matter what condition they are in, and provide services right on the spot. With the support of- With the support of a street outreach team, this person will be able to be held accountable with mental health services, begin a mental health treatment plan, gain documentation of his mental health diagnosis, and be eligible for subsidized housing in Anaronda County. Without an outreach team, him and others in the city of Annapolis like him will continue to struggle on the street with limited supports that help him survive but not get better. So thank you very much for your wonderful proposed amount, and we respectfully ask you to pass that proposed amount.
The next three speakers are Karen Colburn, Michelle Lacy, and Bill Kardashian.
I have some handouts. Can I give those to you?
Hand them to Cindy and she'll pass them out.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the Council. My name is Karen Colburn and I am Executive Director of Box of Rain. I'm here tonight to gain support for a community grant to fund a new program that we're doing called Charting Careers. As you may know, we are an Eastport-based group, 501(c)(3). We've been around since 2003. And many of you know us as a maritime camp for at-risk youth, but we are really much more than that. We now have 60 children under our wing, age to eight through high school, and we provide continuous engagement with these kids throughout the year. We have a boat-building program. We have, we just did a partnership with the Pitt Moyers Center on a fitness and nutrition program. We have after-school clubs. So we like to keep them continuously engaged. We have a very high retention at Box of Rain. The kids join us at age eight and they tend to stick with us just all the way through. And we have about a quarter of them now in high school, and we need to start thinking about what their future might hold. So the Charting Careers program is really to sort of take our kids to the next level and to help them figure out how they can create a pathway to independence. The program we plan is going to start in elementary school, working with these kids to sort of create curiosity and learning, talk about careers, and then through middle school, working with these kids to explore different careers, their strengths or interests. And then in high school, working with them on financial literacy skills, job interviewing, all of those soft skills that they need to achieve success. And in addition, offering them one-on-one counseling to really help them find the job, get in college, do the things that they need to succeed. We're very excited about this program and I hope that you'll help us support it. We are using a certified life coach, several social workers, people in special education to help us come together to create a curriculum that will really take these kids from elementary all the way through high school and hopefully into productive jobs. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Michelle Lacy. I am the Chief Development Officer for the Lighthouse Homeless Prevention Center here in Annapolis. I live at 225 Nottingham Health, Annapolis, 21405. We at the Lighthouse are steadfast in our belief that in order to ensure homelessness is brief and rare in our community, several levels of outreach services must be in place to meet this population's distinct needs. As we've heard from our esteemed colleague from the Department of Social Services, they have a very effective program for reaching street populations. The Lighthouse Outreach Program, for which we are seeking funding this year, provides direct outreach support to the following three groups affected by homelessness and poverty. Winter relief clients. These are our chronically homeless folks in the community that seek shelter at the Lighthouse during winter months, February 1st to March 31st. Community clients, people at risk of becoming homeless due to poverty. Alumni clients, former residential clients of the Lighthouse, individuals seeking to find and maintain housing solutions and stable income. The services that we provide through our outreach program are shelter. We intake into our winter relief temporary housing program these individuals into the community during daytime. They are included in the services, three meals a day, laundry and showering services, case management support on a daily basis, as I said, from February 1st to March 31st. Eighty percent of our population comes from Annapolis. Case management, counseling, goal-setting, monitoring, determination for government benefits and referrals. We're doing a great job of that within the walls of the Lighthouse. Direct financial assistance to address the medical needs such as copays, prescriptions, non-prescription medication, eyeglasses, dental needs, and transportation costs, none of which are readily accessible to our clients. The outreach program helps stabilize people in crisis, moving them along the continuum from stabilization to self-sufficiency. We expect this year, with your help, to serve 310 people through the program next year. The outreach coordinator's salary and direct medical and non-medical expenses for these clients will be partially funded with the requested city grant. The Lighthouse is sincerely grateful to the city of Annapolis for prior funding of this outreach program. The multi-year, multi-program partnership between the city and the Lighthouse has moved us much closer to our shared goal of breaking the cycle of homelessness in our community. We are proud to report that with your help, last year's program in 2016, we're well on track to far exceed all projected outcomes and outputs. As of today, well into the second half of our fourth quarter, the program has found housing solutions and incomes for 66 alumni, delivered immediate crisis relief to 65 chronically homeless through winter relief, and 91 community members, nearly doubling our projected numbers from last year once we were applied. Keep in mind that 86% of our funding at the Lighthouse is private. A small, we're cobbling together the asks that we have out to you this year with private sources and foundation sources. So our ask to you is about one-third of what our requested need is for the program. The Lighthouse directly serves all clients with compassion and respect. Through our wide array of programs and services, we improve the community as a whole by assisting people and becoming less dependent on public services. Every time we house a homeless person, we save taxpayers between $15,000, $15,000, and $30,000 a year. These services allow clients to move from crisis to self-sufficiency and become contributing members of the economic mainstream. Please continue your support of the community grant program, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Bill Kardashian and Gerald Stansberry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Bill Kardashian. I reside at one acting place in the city. I just want to comment, I wasn't coming tonight to comment on the community grants, but sitting through the people who presented before me, it's really encouraging, very heartwarming that we have that kind of outreach within the community. I think the city gets tremendous leverage from its contribution to the various charities and just as a taxpayer, I would tell you, I think it's great value. I also just wanted to comment, I got a great email today from Alderman Budge, kind of decoding the city budget. For those of you who haven't seen it, or even for the public, if it's not on the city website, I think it would be great to add to the city website. I think it was very informative, so thanks for assembling it. Appreciate that. First, the good news. I think the most, the recent decision to create some organizational efficiency through departmental reorganization is a positive step. I hope you will continue on that road and consider other means to consolidate, outsource, or eliminate functions that are either redundant or inefficient. But my prime reason tonight is to speak about the relatively arcane subject of constant yield as it relates to property taxes. I read with great interest about the possibility the council would not apply constant yield to the recent FY 2017 property tax assessment. As you know all too well, the property tax rate currently, 64.9 cents per $100 of assessed value, should go down, not up, when real property assessments rise as they have in the present cycle. But under consideration tonight is the recommendation to ignore the increase in assessments that should, if you followed your own rules, yield a decrease in mill rate from 64.9 cents to 62.8 cents. In all fairness, the savings should be passed on to the taxpayers, not the city coffers. Instead, we are being told, tongue-in-cheek, that property taxes are not being increased. You can say it any way you wish, but if the assessed value of my house or anyone else's real property increases, property taxes will go up. The rate may not change, but my taxes will go up. This affects homeowners, commercial property owners, and renters too. No one will be immune to this increase, unless, of course, you reduce the tax rate. This is the basic premise of constant yield. The city gets the same amount of tax revenues whether assessments go up or down. But the city is choosing to ignore fairness in favor of more taxes. This sounds very much like heads I win, tails you lose. By not applying constant yield, the city will generate an additional $1.26 million in tax revenues. Of course, collecting more taxes is much easier than making difficult budget cuts. Mr. Mayor, I hope you will recognize that reorganizing a couple of departments isn't enough to exercise fiscal responsibility. We are counting on you for financial leadership, the same kind you campaigned on. And to those of you on the Finance Committee, it's not enough to point out the problem. We ask you to recommend the tough decisions about budget cutting. That may mean trimming programs, or staff, or both. On numerous occasions, I have commented about the need to right-size the city bureaucracy. With approximately 634 full-time equivalents in the city, the city of Annapolis is far out of line with a population base of 38,000 residents. It's high time to do something about it. I don't need to remind you that the lion's share of operating expenses are consumed by payroll and benefits. In closing, let me say that rather than pocket the additional $1.2 billion in property tax revenues, the city and this council should use this opportunity to reduce operating expenses by an equivalent amount and consider this a down payment on the forthcoming fiscal crisis. The fiscal projections just over the next three to five years, let alone the projected budget through 2025, should be enough to awaken you to the looming financial crisis on the horizon. The time to do something about it is now. Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment. This is kind of a parenthetic, I did a little bit of research. Three of my favorite cities to compare the city of Annapolis are the city of Rockville, city of Gaithersburg, and Bowie. It was curious when I went there that in the case of the city of Rockville, they have not raised their taxes, property taxes, in nine years. For the city of Gaithersburg, in 40 years. For the city of Bowie, in seven years. My recollection is that the city has raised the tax rate twice, at least in the past five or six years, I recall, at least. I may have the term wrong. So the question is, how can these other cities function and the city of Annapolis can? I think it's great food for thought and I hope you'll consider it. Thank you.
Autumn McEllyson? Thank you. If you wouldn't mind, which services would you suggest we cut?
You know, that's not my job. There are certainly things that I think from a priority perspective. I tend to look at core services versus non-essential. So the core services, meaning the Public Works Department, the Police and Fire, Public Safety Issues, Finance Issues, are places that we require in order to run a safe and healthy environment. Everything beyond that, in all honesty, is really fair game. So I could just point out what I think the problem is. I think it's up to the council to decide and debate where the choices should be made.
Okay. Thank you. Autumn Pendel Charles?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Kardashian, I'm no budget guru, I will say that, but the difference that I initially see between these three cities and ours is they don't have the level of government buildings and those properties that aren't taxed as we do here in the city of Annapolis. Am I wrong, right?
That's probably true with Bowie. I'm not familiar enough with downtown Bowie, but I know Rockville, which is the county seat, has county office building for Montgomery County, has a large federal presence in the city of Rockville. I can't tell you percentage-wise how it compares against the city of Annapolis, but and these are cities that by, I think Rockville now is something about 65,000 people, Gaithersburg is 55,000, and Bowie, I believe, 53,000, substantially larger than the city of Annapolis. And their workforce is, in all cases, is much lower, in some cases by as much as 20%, 25% lower than the city of Annapolis.
And we do have certain services that we provide because we are the capital of Maryland. So I would assume that's...
Yeah, there's no question. And there are some differences, but you know, when you look at, yeah, I think if you talk about, for instance, Rockville has Metro Transit, which provides their bus service, which is a regional system. They have Montgomery County Police and Fire. However, the city of Rockville has its own Police and Fire Departments as well. So there are some, but once you start looking at planning and zoning and community services and finance departments and HR, those services are pretty similar. And I think if you discard the others, which are, as I say, aren't necessarily a one-to-one, it's still a substantial difference.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Glad to be here this afternoon, evening. I'm not going to be long. My name is Gerald Stansberry. I am the President of the Maryland State Conference in double ACP, which consists of 24 branches throughout the state of Maryland, Annapolis, and Anaronda County included. I am also the Maryland Civil Rights Coalition President for the state of Maryland. But I'm here today as a board member for the Baltimore Neighborhoods Incorporated. Prior to making my statement, I would like to thank Senator, I mean, it's not Senator, Alderman Sheila McEllyson for her work with summer programs. Summer programs. I think that's really a model to follow. I deal with Baltimore City a lot and they're trying to find their way through. I think they need to come down here to the city of Annapolis and see how important you all see that is and are doing something about it. So where are you? And I think that's real important. Jobs are important. I'm here to support BNI, which is one of the oldest housing advocates of citizens in our community who have problems with housing. The Fair Housing and Tenant Landlord Programs and Public Information Activities have been of great value to our communities. They have answered over 18,000 calls in the past year with people having problems with landlords, issues, housing issues, and they intervene and they have been very successful in 1,000 discriminatory cases. You may have heard about the one in Baltimore County just recently, in the settlement that came out of that. So we are here to ask you to continue to support BNI. I'm not from Annapolis, but I rep... It's a very, I'm not from Annapolis, but I represent people from Annapolis as the president. We are expanded because of the fact that we received a grant from the Maryland Legal Services Corporation, and as a result, we now extend all over the state of Maryland. This is a very important program, especially when you hear about the housing foreclosures and how devastating that has been to many families here in Maryland, Prince George's, Baltimore City. And this organization is one that they can call and not have to have a price tag attached to it, because whenever you try to get legal representation, they can't afford that if they can't afford to keep their homes. So BNI has been very successful, very successful, in resolving a lot of those issues. And I just want you all to know that it's very important. And I also want to support the homeless, Street Homeless Program while I'm here as the president of NAACP. That's very important. I sit on the Advisory Council in Baltimore City for feeding the hunger. We need to be put more into servicing our people, and that's what BNI does. A lot of the programs I heard here tonight are really doing a fantastic job. The Lady with the Bus, Curring Kids Around, Maryland Hall, all of them are great, but somehow, we're asking you to continue to support BNI. It's a very important program. We want to expand our services further. We want to be able to help the community better, and with your help, we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the public who would like to testify? Please come forward. Now is your opportunity.
Gary Schwirzler, 607 Burnside Street, Annapolis 2 and 403, 421 Fourth Street where I am most of the time. And I'm here tonight representing the cunta cinta, Alex Haley Foundation, that you have been so generous in supporting for so many years. And first of all, I think that you need to be congratulated for the refurbishing of the city dock area. It's a wonderful project. Everything looks great down there, except the memorial needs a little housekeeping. And we actually have a contract signed now with a local company, John Crenn at Signcraft, to help us refurbish the memorial. And the money that you give us every year really goes a long way towards helping things out. I'm here as a taxpayer, hoping that we can maintain what we already have. It would be nice if we could have an increase, because we are putting QR codes on the memorial, and that's all part of the refurbishing. There are a lot of expenses, and we'll probably be running well into the red this year, hoping not only on contributions from you, but also other organizations and private contributions. Anyway, that's it. I just want to thank you for the help and hope that it all continues.
Auto woman. Finlayson?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Schwirzler. I noticed after the completion of city dock restoration that the monument didn't look like it had been before the work. Did we not return it in the same state in which we found it?
I'm not sure why that happened. The story wall really...
That's what I'm talking about.
You know, I've noticed aging myself, and it does seem to accelerate as time goes by. And I don't know what happened. They were supposedly stored at the rec center, but...
I think we have a responsibility, because we removed the story wall...
Yes.
...in order to allow for the construction to take place. But when it was returned, it wasn't returned in the same state. So I would just...
Oh, it's weathered. I don't know how it would weather in storage, but it seems to, I'm not sure if something had been spilled on it during the process of...
Ms. Andrews, maybe you'll look into this, fourth. You know, this is a monument on city dock. It's a tourist attraction. It's a focal point of the harbor. So I think we have a responsibility to assist in this. Mr. Mayor, this is part of your budget. It's not in the community grant section of the budget, but it is. Can you tell us where it is?
I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it is a line item within my budget that we'll be voting on.
So that's not something we have to worry about, changing the, well, I could ask my colleagues...
I can have Melissa double-check. I don't have it in front of me. Mr. Andrews?
It's in the special projects category in the mayor's office.
Okay, and it's broken down by line item and the special? Okay. Just wanted to be clear.
And David and I will look at the condition of the statute. If there's issues, there would be money in the capital fund.
We need it. I might also point out, as Sheila has mentioned, it probably is the most visited tourist attraction in the entire city. We've seen that number from time to time. I don't have the recent statistics, but it's consistently been, and in fact, it was really, really nice, just in driving over here tonight, I saw a little girl, one, she was trying to read one of the plaques, and her father and her brother were there, and they were just literally all over Alex and the kids and the plaques. And really, that's what city dock should be for. You've done a wonderful job of making everything else around it just as good as it could possibly be for what you could spend at the time. And you need to be congratulated for that. We need a little help getting our part of it cleaned up, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Please come forward. Seeing no motion in the chambers, I declare the public hearing on oh thirteen sixteen open until the regular meeting of June thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen. At this time, we'll take a five-minute break and reconvene. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Ordinance oh dash fourteen dash sixteen, Capital Budget for Fiscal Year 2017.
Nobody was signed up in advance to speak. If you'd like to address the council, now is your opportunity. Seeing no motion in the chambers, I declare the public hearing on oh fourteen sixteen open until the regular meeting of June thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Resolution R dash ten dash sixteen, Position Classifications and Pay Plan.
Nobody was signed up to speak. If you'd like to address the council, now is your chance. Seeing no motion, I declare the public hearing on R ten sixteen open until the regular meeting of June thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Resolution R eleven dash sixteen, Capital Improvement Program Fiscal Years 2017 through 2022.
Again, we have no speaker signed up. If you'd like to address the council, now is your opportunity. Seeing no motion, I declare the public hearing on R eleven sixteen open until the regular meeting of June thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. The next item on the agenda is Resolution R dash twelve dash sixteen, FY 2017 Fee Schedule Effective July first, two thousand and sixteen.
If you'd like to address the council, now is your opportunity. Seeing no motion, I declare the public hearing on R twelve sixteen open until June thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Resolution R dash thirteen dash sixteen, FY 2017 Fine Schedule Effective July first, two thousand and sixteen.
If you'd like to address the council, now is your chance. Seeing no motion, I declare the public hearing open until June thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Public Hearing Beginning with ID dash ninety dash sixteen, City of Annapolis Proposed Real Property Tax Increase.
Nobody was signed up to speak. If you'd like to come forward, now is your opportunity. Seeing no motion, I declare the public hearing on ID ninety sixteen closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Ordinance oh dash twenty-one dash sixteen, Title Four Elections.
We have one person signed up. It is Sarah Alfred.
Good evening. I think I'm the only thing sitting between you and a late dinner, so I'll be brief. My name is Sarah Alfred. I reside at 124 Prince George Street, Apartment Two, Annapolis, Maryland, and I'm testifying today as president of the District Thirty Democratic Club. I think everybody here can agree that we should make it, we as government, we as citizens, should make it as easy as possible for everybody to participate in the democratic process and vote. This piece of legislation takes a step towards that in expanding absentee voting to meet the state standard that's been in existence for a number of years now. I would encourage you to take a few steps further and think about ways that will also ease people's ability to vote. The chief two issues that we foresee as being obstacles are change of polling locations between election years. Many people, I'm sure you've run into it in your own elections and campaigns, there's an inconsistency in polling places between municipal elections, county elections, state elections. It creates some confusion among people. We want to make sure that everybody knows where their polling place is every year consistently. The second issue is access to early voting. The state implemented early voting in 2008, and we've only seen an increase every year that it's been utilized. Just last month, twenty-eight thousand Annapolis County residents participated in early voting. We're not asking the city to do an entire week-long process for early voting like the state does, but consider possibilities of, within budget means, obviously, to implement an early voting strategy for city elections. That's all I have, and I'm happy to speak to you all individually about the issue.
Alderman Littman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Attorney, are you able to provide guidance either today or another day on what steps we would have to consider to have early voting?
You really don't want to have an early dinner, I take it.
I ate. I'm fine.
I was not prepared to speak on it this evening, but yes, there are a number of steps that would have to be placed in our legislation, some changes, and then, obviously, the logistic changes that would have to be incorporated also.
So it is in our control, though?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Auto woman. Finlayson?
Following up on that question, may I refer to our elections clerk, who has already prepared a timeline and, because I think there's some other sensitive considerations, I'll say.
What she wants me to say is that the deadline for the city council to pass any election-related legislation is July the twenty-fifth, because the first day you could submit your certificate of candidacy to run in the next election is August the sixth. So therefore, there's no time to change the code and the charter to have this done for the 2017 municipal election. It can be done for the 2021 election, but not for the 2017 election.
And just to be clear, the July date was for 2016? The legislation deadline, you said, was for July...
Twenty-fifth of July.
Of 2016?
Of 2016.
Yes.
Now, I do have a question for Ms. Alfred. Are there any models of early voting around the state or elsewhere that has a shorter voting period? You understand the...
I do. I don't know off the top of my head. I apologize for not having that data available, but we can certainly, I can certainly look into it in other municipalities around the state.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
If there's anyone else who would like to speak, now is your opportunity. Seeing no motion, I declare the public hearing on oh twenty-one sixteen closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Ordinance oh dash twenty-three dash sixteen, Grading Permits for Tree Removal.
If you'd like to address the council on this subject, please come forward. Seeing no motion, I declare the public hearing on oh twenty-three sixteen closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Legislative Actions on Second Reader, beginning with Ordinance oh dash ten dash sixteen, Water Service Billing Adjustments.
Is there a motion to adopt oh ten sixteen on Second Reader?
No.
Is there a second?
No.
All right, there's a number of amendments, and I will let the sponsor speak to them. The first one we have is from the Finance Committee, Proposed Amendments, and the second one is from the Environmental Matters Committee.
It's been a while. Environmental Matters superseded Finance.
Alderman Littman, if you'd like to?
Sure. We did this a little bit more recently, so hopefully, we'll get through this. So Environmental Matters, let me switch back to Environmental Matters. We heard from Mr. Miller and Mr. Leahy to help us understand what the essence of the problem was. And some of the information we got, we're looking at three years of data, were about sixty-five thousand dollars in adjustments. And the adjustments essentially fell into three boxes, and so we tried to address the three boxes differently. The three boxes are, number one, instances when the, there was a fault on the city's fault, essentially, so a fault with the meter, and in those instances, the committee felt like the city should make the adjustment to the average of the user's previous eight billing cycles, two years' worth of data, to put that person back to where they would normally be. If it's a city fault, also that they, if it happened again within three or five years, it wouldn't matter, they wouldn't be timed out. The second box is where there's a fault on the homeowner's part, but they discover it essentially for the first time with the high water bill, and they go and fix the problem. So a leaky, a broken pipe, for instance, a cracked pipe, causes a large water bill. They fix the pipe, they submit the bill to the city. We felt like that was at least a, sort of a mistake that could be costly as far as the repair goes, and the city should be more lenient in that instance and adjust the water bill to three times the average. The third box was other, for lack of a better description, but it could be someone in the summer used a large amount of water for filling a pool, irrigation, or just doesn't know what they did. And in that instance, the committee felt that the city should be less lenient and adjust the bill to five times the average. Lastly, instead of allowing the person to come back either once in a lifetime, we felt like because if the property is sold, it could be awfully confusing about if it changed hands, so we thought a five-year limit would be appropriate. So if a user uses this reduction once, they can't come back within five years, but six years later, something else happens, they could come back to the city for an adjustment. So that's all the adjustments that the committee made, and they're combined as amendments one and two.
Just as a point of information, and looking back at the Finance Committee consideration, the administration, I believe, Mr. Mayor, in your name, put forward a recommended amendment that we, at that point, agreed to with one change, which was line B of your amendment one, that talks about the protest results and the water consumption for the protested period must be, your initial language was at five, and we sliced that to three times the average of the eight prior water consumption. So I think, I think all of the thoughts that were involved in this a few months ago got picked up in the debate in the Finance Committee amendment, I believe. Alderman and I had moved that when we had dealt with it on finance, but just to clarify sort of what's coming and going here. So I think, I think all of the thoughts that were involved in this a few months ago got picked up in the debate of the Finance Committee. Amendment, I believe, Alderman Arnett had moved that when we had dealt with it on finance, but just to clarify, sort of what's coming and going here, I think we could probably set that aside and debate on the Environmental Matters.
So discussion from the colleagues on the Environment, Alderman Budge?
Yes. I think that the basic point of this legislation is to permit the city administration to provide customer service under circumstances when one of our customers has a bill that is just way out of bounds. I think that the Environmental Matters Committee's recommendations are as hostile to customer service as I can possibly imagine. It defeats the entire purpose of the bill, walking a customer through, well, if you're this, and if you're that, and if you're something else, and we're going to make you pay five times your bill, or three times your bill, and so forth. I cannot possibly imagine being the government employee on the end of the phone call, trying to explain this to an irate customer in the first place. I think this is, I think this is a recipe for failure, and I can't support this amendment.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Alderman Arnett?
Thank you. Well, I understand Alderman Budge's comments, and I have to admit that every time I look at this, I have to resort to three different buckets and try to figure it out. But the underlying purpose of all of this from the get-go was to have a known and publicized process. And the fact of the matter is, this does get complicated. I was very surprised when we got information from Finance and from Public Works, the huge range in the size of these adjustments, and ranges that are in five digits versus few dollars. And I think the circumstances are different. I think our staff, and Melissa does this, and others in Finance are up to the task of explaining it. We have a choice. We can either have it done on an ad hoc basis, or we can try to come up with a process that tries to sort things out. And it's like every other set of rules that government, it's like zoning. Zoning is not fair, but it's the best thing we have, and it takes away property rights, but it also protects the community. So, you know, I'm certainly open to other suggestions on how we can fix this. This was the one that, after sorting it through for several months, occurred to us, but I can certainly live with other suggestions.
Alderman Budge?
I agree that we have a choice, and I think the truth, the choice that I would recommend is the Finance Committee Amendment, which is not before us technically at the moment. We're talking about the Environmental Matters Committee Amendment. And I would recommend to my colleagues that we defeat this amendment and adopt the Finance Committee Amendment. It's much more simpler, easier to understand, and for a $20,000 a year problem, I don't see why we need to go to all the complication of the Environmental Matters Committee Amendment.
I support you in that, Alderman Budge. Alderman Pan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that part of the purpose also, in addition to the things that were mentioned, was to simplify the rules, and this does not do that, to say the least. It's a well-intentioned and well-thought-out amendment, but I think maybe we're, to adopt that, I think we're making things a lot more complicated than we need to do, given the extent of the problem. Look, I've had several complaints in my ward about water bills that I've had to bring to the Finance Department's attention over the years, and I'm, you know, I'm certainly sympathetic with the consumers in this case, but I don't think this really helps us get to be where we need to be. Thank you.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes. May I ask, Ms. Lehman, have you worked, I thought I heard speaking with your department?
Melissa Lehman, Assistant Finance Director. As far as a policy goes, and as far as staff following a certain policy, obviously simplified is always easier. The current policy, the current internal policy that we use today is two different scenarios. So it's somewhat of a in-between of Finance Committee's adjustment or amendments and Environmental Matters amendments. And they've been doing that since long before my time, so, you know, I can't really speak to what would work better. I just know what we do today.
So it sounds like there is a third option. There is more work that can be done on it.
I think the Finance Committee would just address that. Alderman Lippman?
Thank you.
Thank you. I think two pieces that are being overlooked by this discussion so far is, one, that the administration doesn't want discretion. They want a clear set, either we give the money or we don't. Director Jurel is still here, and he participated in these discussions, and I think one of the, he was able to speak bluntly. He'd also point out what I'll point out, which is, this isn't just to look out for the person who's got the high bill. This is to look out for all of the other ratepayers who are subsidizing the failure of the person to look out for their water bill. We had, there was one instance where it was $20,000, over $20,000 water bill, and it was cut down to $20,000. That means all of us other ratepayers and all our city residents are footing that bill. This isn't just a matter of good customer service that a corporation can eat in the name of good customer service. This is taking money from some citizens and giving it to other citizens. And I personally think we need to be mindful of whose money we're playing with here. Alderman Budge, you said you couldn't think of anything more harsh. I could. In fact, I would support something more harsh, which is to leave out the third bucket. That if, it's not the city's fault, and it's not a repair that you didn't fix, that we shouldn't give any adjustment. To me, that's more fair to all of the other ratepayers and treats people fairly. So I hear what you're saying. I obviously disagree. This is not something I would, you know, put my sword, throw myself on the sword for, but I think we need to be fair, and we need to take the discretion away that the department doesn't want.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Mr. Mayor, I'd suggest that, to that point, I mean, the challenge in looking at the Pendel Edees Amendment Finance Committee package is that that issue, and looking at the list that was prepared, the January 2013, the current water bills, I mean, there are a handful that it is the city's error and responsibility. And how does that get handled in those cases? Because I think, I mean, we're talking about angry constituents when it is our fault, and they should have no benefit, no increase actually happening to them, but they're going through the process trying to figure that out. How do we, you know, if we're going to move away from the Environmental Matters language, which takes that into consideration, to the simpler language, I'm not sure, as we became aware of that as the process went on and we wrestled with this, how do we make sure that we take care of those constituents too? Because I think that's, you know, a point where people are going to be very pissed off, so. We may want to think about other amendments, if the desire is to move away from the Environmental Matters package.
Is there a second for the Environmental Matters Amendment? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? No. We might have to do a roll call. I couldn't tell the ayes and nays.
Mayor Pan Levy?
No.
Alderman Arnett?
Alderman Budge?
No.
Alderman Payon?
No.
Alderman Pendell Charles?
No.
Alderman Finlayson?
No.
Alderman Lippman?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby?
No.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Amendment's been defeated. We'll move on to the next one, which is from the administration of the Finance Committee. Is there a motion to adopt that amendment?
Second?
Second. Discussion?
I think that this gives a, this amendment gives a flat correction. It addresses the issue of defining the policy that Alderman Lippman raised. It's easy to understand and implement, and I think it's a sensible way to go.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt O-10-16 as amended on Second Reader?
So moved. Second?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Is there a motion to adopt O-10-16 on Third Reader?
So moved. Second?
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Pan Levy?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Alderman Payon?
Aye.
Alderman Pendell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Lippman?
Aye. No, sorry. No.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Ordinance O-12-16 City of Annapolis Departmental Reorganization.
Is there a motion to adopt O-12-16 on Second Reader?
So moved.
Is there a second? All right, we have three amendments, the Pendell Charles Proposed Amendments, Environmental Matters, and the Budge Amendments. And I'll let the sponsor speak to them, so Alderwoman Pendell Charles.
Yes. Concerning Amendment Number 1, Page 2, Line 45, Strike and. Amendment 2, Page 3. Oh, CA, am I on? Oh, sorry. I'm on O-12-16. Yes. Okay. Sorry, I'm on the chart amendment. Sorry about that. No, no, no.
We can vote on them all in a block, though, so.
Basically, what we're doing here is taking the Office of Human Resources, putting that under the City Attorney's Office. That will be the Human Resources Manager, and also the Environmental
I don't, did you just say the City Attorney's Office?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, but, no, thank you.
It's late. I'm sorry, the City Managers Office. I am so sorry. As well as the establishing the Director of Office of Environmental Policy. That's basically the gist of those, of the amendments.
Is there a motion to adopt the Pendell Charles Amendments? Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor of the amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The next amendment is the Environmental Matters Proposed Amendments, and I'll let the sponsor speak to them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Amendments 1 through 6 are essentially cleaning up amendments, fixing misspellings and just various cleaning up. The last one, Amendment Number 7, that is to, I think, just to correct an oversight. DNF is currently charged with eight different things, and going through all of the legislation, I found places where 1 through 7 were given to another department or the new office, and that last one was missing. So we thought it made sense to add it to the new Office for Environmental Policy.
I would entertain a motion to vote on all of them as a block.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. The third one is the Budge Amendment.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. First, there are two Budge Amendment documents in our online system. We are looking at the Budge Amended Proposed Amendments. For those of you who are able to download them, they're in technicolor, just to make sure we're talking about the right set of amendments. These amendments are all technical in nature, correcting incorrect references to the departments being reorganized and so forth, and straightening out some essentially clerical errors in the crafting of the bill. I am happy to go through them one by one if anybody in the council
Can you just do the green ones?
Is there a motion to approve the Budge Amendments as a block without discussion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt O-12-16 on Second Reader as amended?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Is there a motion? Is there a motion to adopt O-12-16 on Third Reader?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Pan Levy?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Alderman Payon?
Aye.
Alderman Pendell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Lippman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
No.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Items Removed From the Consent Calendar Beginning with Legislation on Second Reader O-20-16 Title 17 Updates and Amendments.
Is there a motion to adopt O-20-16 on Second Reader?
So moved. So moved.
Is there a second? We have one proposed amendment from Alderman Lippman, and I'll let him speak to it. Any discussion?
Only to add that I've been through the proposed amendment, and I agree with it completely.
All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
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 Is there a motion to adopt O-20-16 as amended on Second Reader?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to adopt O-20-16 on Third Reader?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Pan Levy?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Alderman Payon?
Aye.
Alderman Pendell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Lippman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is For the Good of the Order ID-249-16 A Memorandum Pursuant to City Code Section 4-44-080 Election Reports Required.
This is for information only, so no action needs to be taken. Mr. City, Alderman Pfeiffer?
Mr. Mayor, I have another For the Good of the Order item. We are scheduled to have a session on Thursday on the Budget and Amendments, and the hope is, and talk with the City Manager tonight, that any of our colleagues who are interested in offering specific amendments, that he's happy to work with the Finance Department to have sort of scoring done of potential amendments, see if we can get stuff on paper in the next day or so in advance of that, so they can come in and be able to speak to them of what people intend to offer. Obviously, the Finance Committee Package of Amendments will probably be where we'll start, but I know some of our colleagues have ideas and amendments they'd like to bring forward, so I hope people will reach out to the City Manager and put those on paper and at some point tomorrow into the next day, so we can have a discussion on Thursday afternoon.
Madam City Clerk?
Okay, I just have a question for clarification. At the meeting on Thursday for your amendments, you do realize that you can't adopt any amendments to any of the legislation for the budget, because the public hearings are still open until June the 13th. So you can't
Absolutely.
adopt them, but you can discuss them and get a census on them.
Exactly. So, yeah, the hope is to do it, to have a public discussion in a, in a public setting about potential amendments that people would be thinking about making to the budget, but not actually attaching them to the budget, so, before the 13th.
Thanks.
Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Acceptance of the Recommendations Presented to the
Alderwoman Finlayson?
It's okay. Question for the Chair of the Finance Committee. Those amendments that were offered at the Finance Committee in the past, do they have to be resubmitted? Or I had one, Alderman Kirby had one?
I'll ask Cindy. I think probably anything that was written up, because, I mean, those were produced in sort of amendment form. I'm sure we can have produced for Thursday. So, yeah, we'll talk about that to make sure that anything, yeah, those definitely were brought up along with Alderman Budge's capital amendment, so. We will make sure that we have those, so you don't have to go back and recreate those. I just, I want to make sure that if anyone else has come up with other amendments since we've brought up along with Alderman Budge's capital amendment, so we will make sure that we have those, so you don't have to go back and recreate those. I just, I want to make sure that if anyone else has come up with other amendments since we've started that process, or that we're not aware of, so we can start to have a real discussion of everything.
But we should still sit down with the City Manager and the Finance Director and talk about how this should be funded.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item on the agenda is Acceptance of the Recommendations Presented to the Public Safety Committee from Chief Priestup Regarding the Requests from the Caucus of African-American Leaders.
Is there a motion to adopt the recommendations, accept the recommendations from the, presented to the Public Safety Committee from Chief Priestup Regarding the Request from the Caucus of African-American Leaders?
Yes. In front of you should be a document as such, which is, consists of the seventeen recommendations from the Caucus of African-American Leaders. This was presented to you at the work session in April. We have included, as you can see, the recommendation, funding if it's applicable, whether there's a change to the code that's needed, the response recommendation, who would be responsible if the recommendation were to be adopted, the date of completion, whether it's a short-term, long-term, or whether it's already something that's been adopted, and other supporting documents along with this, and you should all have those attachments. So, for the record, Mr. Mayor, this should be accepted as the report from the caucus through the Public Safety Committee. So, I make that motion.
Alderman Budge?
I think that's it. Yeah. I'm not sure that's all of them, though. And I think it will also be updated again, because, as you've heard recently, we're already implementing the pilot program for body cameras. So, already, this chart has changed a bit. Chief Priestup will be sending forward those changes. But, yeah.
Alderman Budge?
The document that's in front of me has drafts stamped in huge letters all over it. Does this mean that this document is no longer draft?
Yes. Well, yes, you will get another, a clean copy. This, you know, this is not draft, and this is the document.
I just want to make sure.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the agenda has been completed.
If there's no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.